Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters White Bear Lake Area Candidate Forum, virtual candidate forum for candidates running for the at-large election for Stillwater ISD 834 School Board. You will be electing three people for three-year terms. This forum is not open to the public and is not being livestreamed. It is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel. In addition, local cable stations will replay this forum on a schedule determined by them. Candidates, if for some reason your internet connection is lost, please call in using your phone. Hasn't happened yet, but good. I'm Mary Santi. I live outside the district in White Bear Township. I will be moderating. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages citizens to participate in their government. While the league studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. The goal of our forums is for voters to learn about the candidates and their positions who will be on the ballot on November 3rd. All candidates were invited to participate in the forum, and I should say, one candidate, Nance Purcell, suspended her campaign, but it was too late to not be on the ballot. And we are missing Philip St. Oris in the forum tonight. But the candidates who are here are Dawn Beavers, Katie Hawker, Matt Unken, Annie Porbeany, Mike Patasek, and Sarah Stivland. Candidates will give their opening statements in alphabetical order. After that, the beginning speaker will be rotated for every question. Closing statements will go in reverse alphabetical order. You saw the timer. We'll show a card when you have 15 seconds and then stop, and you may finish your sentence. So we will begin with opening statements, and we'll have Dawn Beavers.
Well, first, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight and for giving this very important tool to our voters. My name is Dawn Beavers, and I am running for school board for Stillwater area schools. I'd like to ask you for your support. I am a former high school teacher and administrator, and I now have a daughter in seventh grade at one of our middle schools. I am very passionate about education, and I care deeply about the success of our schools. The most critical issues that I think are facing our district are unity, student achievement, and financial responsibility. Over the last several years, it has become clear that our district is divided and that we need some unity. I feel I'm in a pretty unique position to help bring us back together. I want to reach out to all of our 18 communities that we serve. I think you'll agree that the most important job of any school board is to raise the academic achievement of the students that we serve throughout our entire district. I will be sure to put our students at the core of every single decision. And fundamentally, I believe we must be financially responsible with every dollar the school district is provided. We must be transparent and avoid wasteful spending. I really do believe we can do better together.
Thank you. And next is Katie Hawker. You have to unmute yourself.
All right. Thank you. Thank you as well for hosting this. It's quite an honor to be here and be part of this forum tonight. My name is Katie Hawker, and I'm running for a seat for one of the four-year terms on the Stillwater School Board. I am a parent in the district. I have twin third graders in elementary school that started distance learning this week. I am also a former teacher and a more recent tutor as well, so I have lots of practical experience at the classroom level, seeing kind of how things work with students and teachers, and working with administrators, and also as a tutor, working with kids from kindergarten all the way up through college. I'm also a big-picture thinker. I really like to look at how education works macro scale. I really enjoy talking about education with other parents and with educators and with students as well. I enjoy listening and hearing how people are enjoying the district, what is working, what isn't, particularly as we go through our hybrid and our distance learning models. I'm fascinated to see how things are going. I also am excited to seize this moment in being in this race during a pandemic as we're figuring out and changing how we do school, and ultimately, I hope to bring a positive attitude and change in our district and create an education for today's world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matt Unken.
Hi, my name is Matt Unken. This is my first foray into public politics. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting us to this forum tonight. And the reason why I'm running for school board is I've seen some changes in our school board, or changes in some of the decision-making in our school board recently. And I think it's been some changes that have caused some issues. You know, I know one candidate had mentioned unity, and I think there has been some big splits in our district because of some of the things that, some of the votes that have been taking place. And so, my goal is to try to get back to doing school again. I'm a teacher myself. Actually, I'm education coordinator for a nearby district. I have two children in this district. I have a senior at the high school, and I have a junior at the high school. We have really enjoyed our experiences in Stillwater schools, and it would, again, it would be my goal to get back to making sure we're making good, responsible financial choices where the money is focused on our students, as opposed to other things that have nothing to do with the classroom. I also think that we have some severe equity issues, especially with our rising growth in the southern part of our district. And so, we need to really start taking a look at these things and making sure that we're making a good school that is welcoming and is a good place for everybody to be.
Thank you. Next, Annie Porbeany.
Thank you very much, and thanks for inviting me to be a part of this opportunity. So, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Annie Porbeany. I am a parent. I think I'm gonna probably stick with being a parent in the district. I am running for school board for several reasons. I'm running for school board because I'm a big believer of the opportunities that our children in this district have. I'm a big believer of fiscal responsibility as well. We changed a lot of what we see today in terms of providing those opportunities for our kids. I'm also a big believer of student achievement. Fiscal responsibility, student achievement, all of those fall, you know, fall in line. I'm also a huge believer of diversity and inclusion, as well as accountability, really engaging ourselves in processes that includes a community, but also includes the voices of our kids. I'm a big believer of hope, and I'm also a big believer of a vision that we can give to all of our children the very best of our world, regardless of status, race, or creed. And by saying that, I'm also a big believer of a collective desire for excellence in our students, teachers, and also administration in our community. I'm a big believer in knowing that collectively, we can make things happen for our students. I'm a big believer in also knowing that we have the opportunity to work together as a community to enrich what we have as one of the richest districts, one of the richest districts in the state. I'm a big believer in knowing that we can do this by creating the change that we want. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next to go is Mike Patasek.
Hi. Hi. Thank you, Mary. First of all, like everybody else, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this wonderful opportunity. Why am I running for reelection? Because I have the same fervor as when I ran 12 years ago. I want to make a difference, and I believe I have the necessary qualities to make a difference. I'm experienced, I'm knowledgeable, and I get things done. Experienced, I served 18 years as a high school classroom teacher. I've taught college classes, and I also served as a high school principal, 15 years, and a curriculum director for seven years. I'm very knowledgeable after those 40 to 50 years in education. Also have three degrees from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, including a PhD in educational administration with a strong minor in curriculum and instruction, and I wrote my dissertation on school bond referendum. And most importantly, I get things done. In two examples, if I have enough time, that I want to talk about very, very briefly, is I helped bring Project Lead the Way, a pre-inecenary curriculum to both our middle schools and our senior high school. And I also played a key role in the second one, which is convincing one of our local legislators to co-author a bill that extended QCOM to District 834. And it brought, and note the amount, it brought a form of teacher development, and it brought $1,577,000 to our district.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. And final speaker for opening statement, Sarah Stivland.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for making this opportunity available to all of us. This is really, really a great honor to be here tonight. I am Sarah Stivland, and I'm an educator at heart. I have bachelor's degree in secondary social studies from San Diego College, and I have a certificate in gifted and talented education from Hamlin University. I'm also a mom. I have three kids who attended and graduated from Stillwater area schools. And my husband and I started a medical care company called Bluestone Physician Services, which is based here in Stillwater, that we started together on our dining room table in 2006. I love this river valley, all of the incredible history and the natural beauty, and I want our schools to reflect the best that this valley has to offer. I want our schools to be the best they can possibly be. Great communities fight for great schools, and I believe that is exactly what we are all doing right now. We all want amazing schools, close to home, and wonderful teachers who care deeply and believe in our children. I'm running for school board because I want to see us at number one in the state with happy, challenged students who know exactly who they are and are fully prepared for whatever they choose to do in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll turn to questions, and they were solicited on our League of Women Voters website, an email. After all candidates have answered, and you've agreed to one-minute answers, raise your hand if you would like to have a rebuttal, and you'll get 30 seconds for that. We will ask as many questions as time allows. So, I will designate who goes first, who goes second, who goes third by calling your name. And for this question one, Matt Unken goes first. The question is, we'll just start with the one that the whole town is talking about. You're ready. The superintendent was bought out during a pandemic. What are your thoughts on how that has affected students, teachers, staff, and the community?
Well, when that took place this summer, prior to that decision by the current board, there was quite an outpouring of support, not only by students, families, but also by teachers and administrators, including one of the superintendents, leader of the superintendents of Minnesota, I believe, anyway, that spoke before the board. My personal feeling was that it was a poor decision, especially in a time when we're going to be facing financial crisis that is due to COVID-19. Also thinking about that we have a levy that's going to be coming up, and so we don't really have a lot of money to spare to begin with. And Ms. Pontrelli only had one year left on her contract, and they could have allowed that to play out and then let a new board decide on her fate to come.
Thank you. Next to answer is Sarah Stivland.
Thank you. Yes, of course, it's a very timely question. I know a lot of people have questioned the timing of this departure, but the bottom line is when there is a problem that is affecting our entire district, we need to take action. We need to address it. What I have come to know is that, which seems obvious, is that the board is not able to make good decisions that are sound for the sustainability of our district if we cannot trust the information that we're getting from administration. I think the board needs to have a very strong working relationship with administration. We need to be able to trust that the information we're getting is accurate and timely and complete. And if we don't have that, then everything else we do is made much, much more difficult. So, I understand the timing was really difficult for us as a district, but I don't see how we could go forward without. Thank you, Ms. Stivland.
Thank you. Next to go is Mike Patasek.
Thank you. I would say, first of all, I think many of you know that when I ran last time in the election for reelection, at that time, four years ago, I was asked, can you work with the superintendent? And I said, first of all, I had to get reelected, which I was. Secondly, what I said, and it was a crucial part of that, we will try to work with the superintendent, and we did. And then, thirdly, and I think that's most important, this separation agreement was reached through an amicable solution and agreement. The superintendent displayed an interest in talking between the lawyers, and we did, and it was mutually agreed. And even after it was signed, either party could have withdrawn, and that's the board and that's the superintendent after 14 days, and neither party chose to go that route. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to go is Katie Hawker.
Thank you. I disagreed with the decision to buy out the superintendent. I followed the decision-making process and saw no concrete evidence for a $300,000 buyout at the beginning of a pandemic. I thought the timing was horrible. I knew that there was an attempt last year to do, to end her contract, and she refused and stayed on, and that she had earned the support of 80% of our teachers and 100% of our principals as they spoke out. And she was also supported in an equity letter from a group of our Black students through the district testifying to her work in equity and making them feel valued in our district. So, I thought it was an unfortunate timing and not the best use of funding, but ultimately, it creates kind of a new opportunity for the next board coming in to align our vision as we would look to hiring a new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Annie Porbeany.
Thank you very much, Mary. Personally, I found it was very disappointing, especially in the midst of a pandemic. You know, most people have said it there. When we talk of a strategy in times such as this, I think it's the worst decision anyone could ever make. Talking about fiscal responsibility, paying out that kind of amount of money that could have actually gone in, been more useful with respect to what we're doing right now, and given access to our students to support them during our virtual learnings or online learning, it's pretty disappointing that we spend so much money in a space, knowing fully well that we have an issue at hand. Strategically, it's a very, very poor decision. That could have actually waited. I mean, what is the rush of wanting to get rid of this super ten and paying that much money in the process, whereas we have other issues at hand that we could have actually taken care of? It wasn't the best use of not only our taxpayers' dollars at this time, but it was also throwing away many years of skills and competencies in someone who already have the ability to be able to make the changes that we need within the system today. So, it's disappointing.
Thank you. And finally, we have Dawn Beavers.
So, the thing that I see here is that we haven't answered the question. The question was, how has it affected our teachers, our students, and our staff? So, it wasn't, was the decision a good idea? It was, how's it affected our teachers, our students, and our staff? And so, what I see is that when the superintendent left, we had the opportunity to bring in a principal that was already within our system, that had taught at several of the schools within our school district, and she hit the ground running. And I think that she has the, even in the board meeting whenever she was first hired, she had the support of everyone. And some people questioned if, you know, we had a backup for the school, but she was very well received. She is well-liked. From everything I hear within the community, she is doing a fabulous job. And so, I think our teachers, our students, and our staff have really rallied around her, and she's doing a fabulous job.
Thank you. Any rebuttals for anyone? Raise your hand if you have more to say. Right, Matt?
I'd like to disagree with that statement that it hasn't had an effect on our schools. That's $300,000 that could have been spent in the classroom. Now, if you would say to a student, or to a teacher, or to a parent, does it affect you necessarily individually? Maybe not, but it certainly has taken resources away. Money that could have been used for resources as opposed to paying out a contract that could have waited a year.
Annie Porbeany.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. I think for me, the question was, what was the rush? Why the rush? We talk about taking care of our staff, taking care of our students. From a human resources point of view, which is what I am, doing that at a time of pandemic can cause a lot of disengagement among staff and students. And that's what we see in terms of what is going on right now. So, why the rush in trying to do something in the midst of a pandemic when we could have actually focused on progressive measures and trying to take care of our school system? So, I mean, it's, I don't agree with the statement of that everybody supports or doesn't support.
Thank you. Next, Mike Patasek.
Yes. First of all, I think it's very clear to everyone that since the bold initiative that our community is very divided, both in terms of the board and both in terms of the citizens, the point is, I don't believe we could have passed a renewal of the levy as long as Superintendent Pontrelli was here.
Anyone else? Okay, on our next question, we will begin with Annie Porbeany. And the question is, how would you define the role of school board member?
That is a very good question, Mary. Thank you. I am going to be as simple as it can be. The role of a school board member is to provide overarching governance over the administration. That is our role. Exceeding beyond that is overreaching. So, the role of the school board is to work with the administration to provide the best possible opportunities, not only for staff, but also for students. Simply put, that's the role of the school board.
And next is Dawn Beavers.
Yeah, so I think the role of the school board is, yes, to oversee our administration. For us, it will be hiring a superintendent, as we have an intern now, but also to be the voice of the voters and the voice of the taxpayers. We're the only members that are elected into service, and so, to be the ones that look out for our taxpayers and our voters and have their voice in our district and what is important to them.
Thank you. Mike Patasek.
Yes, I, as I talked before, I think one of the results of the bold decision was that it divided the community. Now, what that meant in practice is that we were under scrutiny, much more so than it had ever been before that. And because of the division, I believe the role of the board is to be a watchdog, to question. As a principal once told me in my first administrative job, we have teachers, we have administrators, but you need the feel of the community, and you get that through your school board.
And next, we have Matt Unken.
I was out talking to some folks the other day, and I met a gentleman that moved here about three years ago, and he had reported that he had been served on a school board for 26 years. And so, I'll give you one piece of advice. He said, students first, taxpayers second, teachers third. Now, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that order necessarily, but I do agree with them on one order. It's students first. And so, I think it's the school board's job to make sure you're working long with administration to make sure that we're giving our students the best educational opportunities that we can. And here specifically in Stillwater, where we are starting to delve into having a much more diverse community, we really need to start watching out for equity and making sure that all of our programs are equitable for all students, making sure it's welcoming for everybody.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Stivland.
Thank you. I think the primary role of the school board member is to represent the community voice in the place where decisions are being made on behalf of our students. It's our job to listen. It's our job to press for excellence in the learning experience, to ask a lot of questions, and to hold the administration accountable to what we expect of them. We want the best schools. It's the board that makes that happen.
Thank you. And finally, Katie Hawker.
Thank you. I believe that the role of the school board is first to govern and to look at things from the thousand-mile viewpoint. The one person that would be directly responsible to the school board is the superintendent, and we would have the opportunity to hire a new superintendent that would hopefully align with our vision in the next year. Also, accountability, and that accountability comes through that superintendent, and she is ultimate, she or he is ultimately responsible for making sure there's accountability throughout the system. And then, ultimately, the school board are the fiscal stewards of our investment as taxpayers, and making sure that every penny spent is going to its max potential in the classroom and to help kids learn. And along with that, we need to educate our public about how our money is being spent, and show them that our investments are going to help our district for the long term, so that generations to come can enjoy a wonderful school district.
Thank you. And everyone's answered. Does anyone have further comments? Annie and Dawn, okay. Annie, go first.
Thank you, Mary. I think I wanted probably just point on the bold statement. It's not very, it's not always very, it's not always easy for the superintendent to make, or the previous board to make bold decisions. We know what the bold program was about. It was about equity for all students, for all the members of our district. So, making assumptions is still a division within the district because of the bold program, I think, is disingenuous, in my opinion, as a parent. And talking about making sure that our district is the very best. Thank you.
Dawn, you wish to say more?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the other thing is that we do overarching policies and don't, we're not responsible for building level decisions. So, having the overarching policies by the school board that then individual school principals go into their building, and they figure out how to make those work within their building, so it gives them some freedom. I think that's super important in order to have student achievement as our number-one goal, and to reach out to all students, is that it's not that the school board's job to do that.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, we'll go on to the next question, and the first person to speak will be Mike Patasek. To what extent do you recognize inequities in our district as related to students, programs, buildings, et cetera? What are short- and or long-term ways to address it?
Yeah. I have participated and continue to participate in Reimagine Minnesota, which is in which is the initiative that comes out of the metro school districts. And I think, first of all, is the assumption, and I go by that and the evidence of that, is there are inequities. What we need to do, I believe very strongly, is personalize education so that all children have an opportunity to do more, to do better. One of the things that I think we can do as board members, and we have made strides in that direction, is to hire more people of varied backgrounds into positions of authority, into positions of teaching, so that students will have someone who can relate and reflect their feelings. But the biggest question here, and one that everybody is aware of in how to do that, is the whole idea of the learning gap, which presently exists.
Thank you. Next to go is Annie Urbany.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mary. This is the reason why I'm running. Part of it is because of the inequities within our system. What, when we talk about inequalities, we talk about opportunities and access. Opportunities and access in terms of instructional buildings. Do, do all of our students have those opportunities and access to viable instructional buildings? We talk about opportunities and access. Do all of our students have the same opportunity and access in terms of our fiscal spending? We talk about opportunities and access. The achievement gap within us, in our school system, it's obvious. There is a problem with respect to how we operate. This board has had the last four years, four years, to make our schools the very best. Today, we're still talking about trying to make our schools the very best. Within the district, compared to A33, we are dead last when it comes to achievement gaps. Our school district is the very last. You've had four years to make those changes, and we still haven't. So, why, now we want to give another four years to continue with the same. We have so many problems that could have been solved, there wasn't.
Thank you, Annie. The next to go is Don Beavers.
Thank you. So, I think that our biggest issue is that we have to go and reach students right where they are, at whatever learning level that they are, and whatever their home situation is. We have to be available to have teachers to go and find out where our students are and where their shortcomings are. You were asking about buildings. And our highest free and reduced lunch rate is at Lake Elmo. And that's the school that, in the community development plan, was falling apart. It basically said it needs to be torn down. There is no way to renovate it. And so, that definitely needs to be addressed. And that is what we will look toward our bond for, that we need to get voted in in 2021. So, we have got to look at inequities. We've got to try and level our playing field. But we have to do that by going out and reaching students.
Thank you. Then the next to go is Katie Hockert.
Thank you. I want to focus on the inequities within the buildings. In the southern part of our district, we have three overcrowded elementary schools. Lake Elmo is a huge issue and has been for 20 years and has not been addressed. And it has our highest free and reduced lunch and our highest minority populations in the district. And they are in an inequitable learning environment. So, that is a top huge priority that must be addressed. Another total missed opportunity was expanding Brookview Elementary. It is a brand-new school. It was built too small three or four years ago now. And this board decided not to expand despite the fact that they had the funds that would have allowed us to have a building that has enough space for the students in that, in the south of the, of the district. And now, it needs to go to a bond, which is a riskier way of earning money for our district.
Thank you. Next to go, Sarah Stivlin.
Thank you. I'm just going to pick up where Katie just left off, because I agree with what you said, Katie, that a big part of our inequities that we need to look at in our district is our facilities. And for too long, Lake Elmo Elementary has been neglected and neglected again and again for years. Everybody understands this. And the community design team met last year. It was the number-one priority on the, their proposal. We need to replace Lake Elmo with one or possibly two new buildings, because it's a very large building right now. And everybody knows the area, the area is growing a lot as well. So, I think the facilities, we need to look at our facilities. And as you all know, we're, we're thinking about how, presenting a bond next year as part of our operating levy to the community for consideration. And I, I believe in this community. I believe that we will have the support we need to, to get that done once and for all. There are a lot more things to talk about in terms of inequities, but there's not enough time in this short, short 90 seconds isn't enough time.
And finally, Matt Anken.
So, the building issue certainly has been covered. So, I, I think I will leave that one there, because I agree with everyone else on that factor. I think the other thing we need to take a look at as far as equity goes is we do have a growing BIPOC families in this district. Our minority, numbers of minority students are, are growing yearly. And I think we need to hear from them. We need to know what their experiences are and build off of those. You know, it's, it, it probably, and you know, I remember going back to a question I got asked at one point and by a student, actually. And I said, well, I said, do you want a middle-aged white guy making decisions for you? Or would you rather I ask you what your experience is and how can we make that better? You know, and, and the, the student kind of chuckled. He's like, yeah, yeah, I guess that might be the better way to go. So, that's what we need to do. We need to hear their stories. We need to know what we can do to help make their, their education better.
Thank you. Any further comments here? Don, Annie, Mike, and Sarah? Okay, Don, go first.
Yeah, I, picking up right where Matt left off. I would love to have a community group that is very, very, that is varied by background and age group and have that as an, as an advisory council to the board, so that when we have to come out with a statement for equality, that, that we're not having middle-aged white guys or women writing it. And so, I think that that's very important to listen. And I think COVID's not helping us at all with these inequities.
Thank you. Annie, next.
Thank you, Mary. I think first, we have to start by accepting the recommendations by the CDT. That's number one. Number two is also including the voices of those within the system itself that participates in the process of change. And when we talk about inequalities, go straight to those who are truly impacted by it. That's number two. Number three is for the district, the, the school to develop policies in place and programs that would truly impact, that are intentional in providing all of those opportunities for our students collectively. I'm not just talking about BIPOC. I'm talking about everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I think what's important, and Katie, you mentioned that, and it was a good point when you raised on Brookview. The point is, why Brookview? I think one of the key reasons why it was overcrowded is it wasn't planned for pre-K, which took two classrooms. And you've got to realize that the neatest school in our district is Lake Elmo. And you're not going to be able to pass a bond issue if Lake Elmo is the only issue that's on the agenda.
Sarah, what's next?
Yeah, hi.
And, and Katie?
I appreciate everyone. Okay. I, I really appreciate this conversation. I, I really do. And I just wanted to say a couple of other things that I think are really important. I think ultimately, when it comes down to inequities in our district, it really, we're talking about respecting each student and showing kindness to each student and meeting them where they are. And I think that's made harder for teachers if our class sizes are too big. So, one of the things I think that would be helpful is smaller class sizes and different policy on discipline would make a difference. Also, just, I'll let, okay.
All right, Matt Anken? And then Katie?
Yeah, I, to respond to the Brookview situation, we're not just short one or two classrooms. And, you know, we're talking about pre-K. Obviously, I think, I think most of us would agree that's a very important thing to have, especially for our lower, lower socioeconomic status students. But nonetheless, we're not talking about one or two classrooms. We're, we're behind a few more than that. So, it, maybe it wasn't planned well. I mean, that's entirely possible. But, you know, it's, it's a bigger issue than that.
Katie? Your rebuttal?
Thank you. One more thing I thought of in terms of inequity is technology. I learned this week that Brookview ran out of Chromebooks. And we have, we purchased a bunch, same with Lake Elmo Elementary. We are on a hybrid schedule. Every child has to have technology at home. And it's a huge issue. A lot of families can't just run out to Target or Best Buy when they find out the school ran out of Chromebooks. So, that is not allowing kids to access their education right now during the pandemic.
Thank you. Glad everyone had something to say. The next question, we'll start with Sarah Stivlin. And it is, in your opinion, are there useful lessons going forward from the Lake Elmo transportation garage experience?
Wow, that is a big question. Are there useful lessons from the Lake Elmo bus garage experience? Well, for those of you who might be paying attention to this, to this tonight, you know, the community voted to support $3.5 million bus garage. The bus garages cost the district now nearly $8 million. And that was, happened without board oversight or awareness or involvement. And so, I guess the big takeaway is that we need to have procedures and processes that demand and expect that our administrators keep the board completely up to date on every single detail, every single time anything happens in a big project like this. The board needs to be made aware so that we can provide proper options for, for protecting the taxpayer dollar.
Thank you. Next is Matt Anken.
Yeah, certainly, this has been a, a financial nightmare. And so, I think there's probably many lessons that can be learned from it. And I, you know, just saw some information today regarding that I think some of the sewer and water stuff is actually being put in that as it was supposed to have been many, well, I'd say many years ago, but at least before we lost the conditional use permit. Yeah, I guess it's my hope that, since it seems like an ideal spot, that maybe we can still get back there in some way, shape, or form. You know, yes, is it going to cost us more money potentially? I mean, that's for certainly out there. But at the same time, we also are sitting in a, a bus barn that is too small for what we have. And we have to have overflow space to, to fill other buses. So, yes, lessons, lessons learned and moving on from there. And, and hopefully, we can still make that, that facility work for us.
Thank you. And next, Annie Urbany.
Thank you, Mary. Personally, I think that the situation could have been handled a little better. But the question here is, when all of the sewer and, sewer and all of that that's been put in, in, on the land right now, are we still going back and are we still going to pay for or to use the, the garage? One thing that we have to make clear right now is that we have bus drivers that are actually packing buses at their homes. And so, that's why I think this could have been handled a little differently. I mean, it shouldn't be, staff members should not be parking those buses in their homes. So, I'm not sure if administration would actually do something without the oversight of the board. I don't know how true that is. Initial, initial approval definitely was there. But it's always oversight when it comes to financial spendings. So, I'm not sure how true that statement is. But I personally don't think it was handled correctly.
Thank you. Next to go, Mike Patachak.
Yes, and right off the bat, what I would say, Mary, is that there, the nice euphemism would be there was a lack of communication. The more harsh, probably, the closer to reality is that on a lot of the bargaining chips and moves that should have taken place, the board was kept in the dark. And so, there are some serious lessons here of omissions and commissions that were committed, and they weren't committed by the board. And we, right now, have a bus garage that we spent over $7 million and were forced to rent an alternative site at $40,000 per month.
Don Beavers?
Yeah, I, I personally think that there should be about eight million reasons and lessons that we learned, because every one of those dollars right now is tied up in this bus garage that we can't use. And as was said, there, we have a $40,000 a month rental cost in addition to that. I do hope we can get back there. But it looks like that, you know, without having that investigation being public yet, it looks like that there was lots of mismanagement. There wasn't line items written in the contract that said, if something didn't happen, then something else happened. And so, when the sewer and water weren't laid, then we had the problem of not being able to use a property that we owned. And then it was delayed again and again. And so, I think that would have been the minimal first step is to have conditions put in that original contract.
Thank you. And finally, Katie Hockert.
Thank you. Thought, following this bus terminal stuff has been a little bit confusing from an outside perspective as a parent. My understanding was that we were going to purchase a bus terminal in order to save taxpayers' money by owning instead of renting facilities, that that would ultimately bring money back into the classrooms and allow tax dollars to be more, more managed for education. And so, when things kind of went awry and the developer and the sewer issues and everything kind of fell apart and we lost our conditional use permit and had to move our buses, it seemed frustrating. I know that there were, there was the finance director who also was put on administrative leave over this and now is gone. And I still don't understand how she was, how, what evidence we have for her misdeeds in this bus terminal. And it was expensive.
Anything further? Annie?
Mary, thank you, Katie, for that. The truth is, we're still, we still don't know. We still don't know what's going on. Paying $40,000 plus every month to a smaller piece of land that we can't even use, we could have managed the other situation appropriately, especially with respect to taxpayers' dollars being involved. What was the issue? What was the problem? With, as a community and as a parent, we still don't know. The information hasn't been released. So, I think it's only fair and it should be transparent in the space to, to submit that.
Sarah Stivlin?
I, I just want to say a couple of quick responses to the questions that have been raised. The reason why the investigation can't be released is because we have multiple litigation related, related to this case. And it would be detrimental to the district to release that information to our opponent if, in, in the court of law. We are looking for additional sites for the buses to, to go, although some bus drivers actually prefer having their bus at home. We are continuing to look for additional space. And third, we just simply did not have a choice. We were forced by the city of Lake Elmo to get off of the property. We were not in compliance with their, with their zoning laws.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the next question. And the first to answer this one will be Katie Hockert. One of our district's most valuable assets is our teachers. They are and have been working without contracts. What is your comment on this situation?
First of all, I think this happens a lot in many districts. I know that I have worked under a delayed contract as well. And it puts a lot of pressure on teachers to work under conditions that, that can be very difficult, particularly during a pandemic, where they are reinventing how they do education every single day. On top of that, in the hybrid model, they're reinventing two forms of education. On top of that, in the hybrid model, they're reinventing two forms of education. So I think delaying a contract and not beginning, as far as I know, contract negotiations have not started. And this puts teachers in a tough position. I think it puts the district in a tough position because we are also in financial crisis as a country and probably losing funding from the state. So it's going to be a tough understanding to show now that we understand how incredibly valuable our teachers are. As a parent, I very much appreciate what my kid's teacher does every single day because I can hear it from the other room. So it's going to be a tough decision to show them our appreciation.
Thank you. And next to go, Mike Potashik.
Yes, first of all, what I'd say is this, and it's not unique to District 834. Typically, when they begin negotiations, which have been going on for months, is that both parties sign an agreement that they're not going to barb in publicly. So it puts us in a very, very tenuous positions as sitting board members to contact. Let me say this, that one is I completely agree. I think we have one of the best teaching forces, if not the best in the state of Minnesota. But our teachers are also rewarded very handsomely. And our teachers are are among the best paid in the state of Minnesota. And again, I'm optimistic. I do believe that we can reach an agreement and I hope the sooner the better.
Thank you. Next to go, Matt Anken.
So actually, being in education myself, I'm on both sides of this. I look at a contract every two years also. As the district I work in is negotiating one. And yes, oftentimes contracts are not negotiated on time. And that's understandable. Part of it is is that they're only two-year contracts. And so it seems like you get one negotiated and and if it's even a half a year late, all of a sudden you're you're starting to negotiate again a year later. You know, just to try to get it out on time, and that is very difficult to do. One thing I would say, you know, I've experienced enough districts to know that, you know, when I've seen good working relationships between administration, school board and a teaching staff, it's typically not too hard and it usually comes along pretty quickly. I worked in the Mounds You District for a couple of years at Irondale High School. And when I got there, I was astounded to know that they typically never have late contracts and they have a wonderful working relationship. So I think it's building those skills, building that good working relationship with one another to to make it go a little bit smoother.
Thank you. Annie Pobeni.
Good, Mary. I think the lapse in contract negotiation is almost three years now if I'm not mistaken. Three years to actually come to an agreement in terms of what, you know, the teachers want and of course what the board also is wanting. I think it's three years too long. Part of our responsibility is to make sure, I'm in human resources, to make sure we have employees that are engaged, that are happy and are satisfied. And I don't think that it has to take three years for us to be able to make that happen. We talk about having the very best district or wanting our students to be the very best in the district. Yet we have situations such as these that has gone on for almost three years. There should be some form of responsibility and accountability on our part. For the mere fact that we're able to negotiate a contract, I think is an issue. That is something that as a board we should take very seriously. We want to keep our teachers engaged. We want to make sure we're providing them the very best, taking care of the resources that we have because it does directly impact our children within the schools itself. We sit here and say we have the very best, yet we don't want to support them. I think that's unfair.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Stivland.
Thank you, Mary. So first of all, I just want to clarify, in the state of Minnesota, the public teachers' contracts are negotiated every two years. So districts are typically doing it every year for the teachers at the same time. And so we've been working on ours since last November. We've been working full full time on it since at least last September. And I know a lot of work has been done during that time that really involves a lot of very complex language in the contract. And so it's not that progress hasn't been made. But it is true that we still don't have a final contract and we continue to work on that. It's not, it's not how I would like to see it done. I was happy to hear, Matt, that you mentioned a district that actually had them done on time. That sounds like amazing. I would love to see that happen going forward. I do think that a good working relationship with administration and with the board really is productive in terms of getting those contracts done on time.
Thank you. And finally, Dawn Beavers.
So I think that having great paid teachers is a goal that we all want. And our teachers are paid well. I think that one thing that we need to remember is that it goes back to the relationship between the teachers' union and the negotiator for the school system. And so the board is approving that contract, but they're not actually the negotiators in the room poring over every detail. And so I think having the give and take between the union, the teachers and the negotiator and the board is very important. And if you don't have that, if one side gets stuck, even on a single issue, then you can not have that contract negotiated on time. And so I I would very much pull for, you know, that we need to have a contract, that we need to have contracts on time. But I think it goes back to both sides. We've got to remember that this is a mutual understanding.
Thank you. Everyone has answered. Are there? Annie Pobeni?
I'll try to be as short as I can. I mean, I disagree with the last statement. The board cannot approve without knowing what's in the contract. One of my colleagues here just said, we're looking at the contracts and it has complex languages. I work as a human resources director. I negotiate contracts and MMA, engineering, SEIU, ASME, you name it. They all have complex languages, but it doesn't take that long. It doesn't take too long for us to be able to come to an agreement. So that's why it's called negotiation. So if the board is not participating in the process, as the last person said, I think that's a problem.
Thank you. Any further? Mike Potashik.
Yeah, Annie, one of the things you referenced were the number of groups that you have to negotiate with. We have reached settlements with an awful lot of the other bodies. But the biggest, and perhaps because it affects the most people, is the teacher group. And that one, we have not settled. But I don't believe it's because of lack of effort.
Any further? Dawn Beavers.
And I just want to clarify, I didn't say that the board didn't understand or know what was going on. They're just not the ones sitting in the room to do the negotiations. And so, you know, when when you push a board to say that you're the ones that aren't getting the contract negotiated, remember that that does go both ways.
Any more? Okay, we'll go to the next question and to begin will be Dawn Beavers. Schools often have diversity activities to promote cultural awareness or competence rather than naming slash confronting racism more directly. How would you prioritize the well-being of BIPOC students over the discomfort of educators and families who may be reluctant to engage in anti anti-racist action? Dawn Beaver.
So I think I got it. That was a long, complicated question. So I would prioritize BIPOC students. I think that we have to go after hiring a more diverse teaching staff, administrative staff. I really believe that any sort of hate speak or hate crime toward any student must be immediately accelerated to the school principal. And I think that this is one of the things that was done poorly in several situations that we had students speak up about. From the principal, it needs to go to the superintendent and there needs to be a way that this is always handled and it can't be, you know, well, we'll just sweep it under the rug. It has to be acknowledged. We have to acknowledge these students. And they need to have someone in their building to be able to go to that they feel comfortable with that that is like them.
Thank you. Next, Katie Hockert.
Yeah. First of all, I would like to talk about the ability to hire a new superintendent and take this opportunity to really find someone who will be equity focused and who will lead the district and actually continue the work that Pontrelli has begun in terms of equity and pushing and being part of the Reimagine Minnesota initiative in addressing multiple levels of inequities and systemic racism that are within our school systems and districts and communities. And I think that that picking somebody intelligent who is committed to that work is a really, really important step. And then also addressing staff and educating our adults in the buildings in their cultural competency and making sure that we coach them in how they can reflect on their own biases and their own understanding so that it doesn't just come as a surprise when a student is offended.
Thank you. Next is Matt Anken.
I haven't heard a district yet that says that we want less minority teachers to be working here, less minority staff. That's something that every district wants. The problem is that the chance that we're going to get a ton more is highly unlikely. So we take the chances we can. I know we just hired a principal or an assistant principal down in Afton Lakeland, which is great. It's a great move. And we certainly can do more. That being said, it's up to us to start having those uncomfortable conversations. We need to be uncomfortable. We need to start talking about what racism is and how it affects systematically a lot of the students. And even more and more students are going to be coming into our district. So until we're ready to start having those uncomfortable conversations, I shouldn't say until we're ready. We need to be ready. We need to start having them. And that needs to go into the classrooms and we need to start using restorative practices. We need to hear stories. We need to start working on that. Our students deserve the education on on these topics.
Thank you. Next to go, Sarah Stivland.
Thank you. This is a great question. I I think that we have recently taken some pretty important steps in our district to address this. We have recently hired a cultural liaison for the district. He's going to be based out of the high school, Cornelius Rich, who is a black adult who can be a resource for our students of color in the district who need someone that they can go to who they feel will understand them. I think that's just the beginning. He's also going to be helping us to define a path forward to address all of these issues, starting with empowering our students to to lead the rest of the district in having those difficult conversations that we need to have. I think that we're looking at our curriculum and raising awareness both in our schools and in our community as a whole on the actual history of racism in this country. And those are the uncomfortable conversations we need to have. But people don't know what what they need to know and we need to be able to have those conversations. And I think that our discipline policy also needs to be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next to speak, Mike Potashik.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, I spent a good portion of my life as a principal and an assistant principal. And 20 years ago, folks, I can remember talking to teachers who were abusing kids. And they felt that there were certain groups that they could do that with. It was unacceptable then. It's unacceptable now. And so whether it's name-calling, whether it's bullying, whether it's gay bashing, whatever, any of those practices, when they're known, have to be dealt with and not to be tolerated. I firmly believe to the bottom of my soul that every kid has the right to go to school and feel safe and secured and not threatened. And when acts come up that violate that, there need to be consequences to those as well. So that's it, as I see it in the trenches. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Annie Pobeni.
Thank you, Mary. I think I'm going to start by saying first, the hiring of Cornelius should not be a BIPOC black student-focused issue. It should be for all of our students. And hiring a black person and focusing it on just for the black students, I think that's where it's the understanding of what intercultural competency is that's missing here. The thing that we hire a black person for black for a black student, that's where the problem is. There's a gap in that understanding. The school has to be intentional, intentional in terms of the way it's trying to solve its problem. It's a community problem. It's not just a black student problem. It is a community problem because the impact is by other students on minority students. So understand that the concept of intercultural competency is very important. So Cornelius Cornelius's job should be for all, helping our students understand the principles of what it takes to live in a society where they can walk with diversity. That's number one. The curriculum is another thing. Training programs. Thank you.
Okay, rebuttals. Matt Anken.
Yeah, I want to add to what Annie just got done saying. It's not our minority students' job to teach us. It's our job to learn and to find that out ourselves. We, she's right, it's a community issue. And yes, Cornelius should be there for all students. And I know some liaisons from around surrounding high schools. They don't just work with students, minority students. They work with everybody. And it's like you said, it's everybody's job and it's certainly not the students' job to teach us.
Any further? Sarah Stivland.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate these two comments. I just want to clarify. I see Cornelius Rich as a resource for all students. And he also happens to be a black man who that is, that is exactly what we were just talking about is important for us to hire people of color to represent that in our in our schools. But he is there to help all of us learn and he's going to help guide us to the way forward. This is a community-wide issue.
Annie Pobeni.
Thank you, Mary. We have Cornelius. You know, as a black woman, I want to be able to see black teachers as well, if that's what we're going to talk about. Because then I can relate to someone and say yes. So I think that's also important. So having, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying that we should think about this as a whole. And our kids are going to go into the world, whether you're black, white, or whatever it is you are. You're going to work with diversity. You're going to work abroad. It is helpful to think about the issue of diversity from a collective, from a whole process. Understanding even by the teachers themselves, by the administration. I'm going to stop there.
Thank you. Did I leave more hands? Dawn Beavers.
Yeah, I think that we've got to talk about education for our teachers. We've got to talk about education for our students in this realm. But we've also got to talk about community education because some of this comes from the home. And so I think we need to give our parents also the opportunity to come into our schools and to learn because we can't address all of this at school if we're not addressing it at home as well. Students are not born racist. And so I think that that is very important that we bring our community in as well.
Thank you. Annie further? And I'm afraid that's all the time we have for questions. So we now turn to closing statements. They're in reverse order of your opening statements. So the first to go will be Sarah Stivland.
Thank you very, very much. And once again, and I just, I want to say I appreciate this opportunity. If students are at the center of everything we do, then what does it mean when financing of unnecessary buildings comes first? Why the focus on a new space for administrative offices when we clearly have space concerns across the district in all of our classrooms? Why would the community support a bond to pay for a new Lake Elmo Elementary building when the last bond turned out to be a lie? Trust is crucial. Everything we do is based on trust. We cannot be at our very best without it. The previous administration repeatedly trampled all over this truth. I care deeply about this community and I believe in our schools. This is the oldest school district in Minnesota and I can, I believe it can be the very best. But right now, we have more work to do. Please join me in putting students first. I'm Sarah Stivland and I thank you for your support.
Next, Mike Potashik.
Yes, I'm going to make this relatively brief, but there's no Yes, I'm going to make this relatively brief, but there's not a lot you can say in one minute anyway. But again, I think you should vote for me, and I hope you give me serious consideration. I have experience. I have knowledge, and I've achieved a lot of things for students, being on the board for 12 years. But the last thing I'd like to end up with is I want you to vote for the PTA candidate. And what that means is the first three letters of my last name are P-T-A. And so what I'm asking you to do is to remember that, and please give serious consideration to the PTA candidate, Mike Potashik. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Annie Povany.
Thank you, Mary. Again, my name is Annie Povany, and I'm asking for your vote for several reasons. I'm a big believer in our students' abilities, and I keep saying this and I continue to say this. We have the opportunity to make our district one of the very best in the country, not just in the state, although it's just a child to begin at home. But we have the opportunity to make sure our district is the shining light in the country as a whole. And given that opportunity, there's so many things that we can do to empower the capacity of our students and teachers. So I'm asking all of you out there, this is an opportunity for us to drive that challenge that we look for, the hope that we have in our community, and the change that we truly need. Because truthfully, our students are capable of anything and everything. And so this is an opportunity for you to go out there and make that change happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Matt Anken.
Thank you. Again, my name is Matt Anken. As I said before, it's my first foray into public politics. And the reason why I want and wanted and looking for your vote is because our current board has made some bad decisions, in my opinion. They've had their opportunity. They have not been very fiscally responsible. And I'm not sure they've always had the students' interests in mind. I think they've had an agenda. And one of the first things about being a board member that they ask you to think about is to not come in with an agenda. I can tell you that's, that's where I'm at. I don't have an agenda, other than just making sure we do the best we can for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Katie Hockert.
Thank you. Again, I am Katie Hockert, and I am asking for your vote. I am so excited to get started in building trust in our community and ensuring equity and evaluating our educational needs and the community desires along with that, to maintain fiscal responsibility and a stable budget. I understand that we need to be responsible stewards of our tax dollars. And as our year approaches next year, when we need to take on a levy and, and a bond as well, we need to do extra due diligence in educating our public. And I think this year is an awesome opportunity to engage parents and families in the learning process as we learn alongside our students and our educators. Stillwater has a long history of strong skills and has risen to challenges in the past. I have faith in our community that we will demonstrate, that they will demonstrate their support by electing student-centered board members who will move our district forward and help us to create an education for today's world. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Dawn Beavers.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I believe that I'm right for this job because I have experience. I've been a teacher. I've been an administrator. I've been a coach, and I believe in our kids. I believe that this is a fabulous district and that we can make it better together. I believe in unity. I believe in representing all eighteen communities, not just one or two. And I also believe in representing all of our stakeholders, our teachers, our students, our taxpayers, not just our union, not just one area, but all of our district. And that's really, really important to me. I think that we can all do so much better together. And I'm Dawn Beavers, and I'm asking for your votes.
Well, thank you. That ends our forum. Thank you, candidates, for coming to speak to us tonight and for stepping forward to run in the Stillwater District. Thank you to our volunteers and viewers for watching and for your interest in becoming informed voters. We will put all of our forums on YouTube channel. You will find links to them on our website. Maybe we could put our website on the chat. You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website, mnvotes.org. And if you need to register or update your registration, you can do that online or in person. Thank you. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting November 3rd.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.